I've been looking at the forty-five highs. I mean, they're...
I think they do a lot of the blow process, that's true.
Yeah, they do.
Good evening, everybody. We're gonna have a, this is Tuesday, May 5th, seven o'clock. We're gonna have our verging trustee meeting. And stand up, we'll do the pledge allegiance, get started. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our country here at Abra. Thank you. We have a roll call, please Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Present.
Trustee McGuire?
Present.
Trustee Mann?
Present.
Okay, uh, we tabled this last time and we took some time to go through that stack of paperwork, but we want to do the review and approval of prior meeting minutes. Minutes tabled from four, seven, I just said, regular meeting, the last time we had a meeting in April. So, uh, there's a list of eight different meetings here. I don't think I need to list them all.
You need to read them into their record.
You want to read them into the record? Be the regular meeting, regular trustee meeting held on Tuesday, October 1st. The audit committee meeting held on Tuesday, October 15th. The regular trustee meeting held on Tuesday, October 15th. The regular trustee meeting held on Tuesday, November 6th. The work session meeting held Tuesday, November 13th. The work session held Tuesday, November 19th. And the work session held Tuesday, December 17th. The regular meeting held Tuesday, December 17th. All in 2019, just to clarify.
I'm moved to approve the meeting minutes listed by the township president.
Second. So, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the meeting minutes. Do we need a roll call on that? What we do? Tracy, please.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm just passing the sheet. There's, um, eight sheets that were signed for minutes.
They don't have the minutes with them.
They're here, you want them. You want me to send you the minutes, sit down with them? They have the minutes listed on there.
Do you have a two-wheel car to carry that over?
Put them later on there, and the minutes are right here if you want them.
Thank you.
These are all the transcriptions that were prepared.
Correct. That, so far, as of April, that was the month as of April 7th.
Okay, so now we have some more meeting minutes to go over. We review and approve of prior meeting minutes. These are the regular trustee meeting held on Tuesday, November 19th. The special trustee meeting held on Tuesday, November 25th. The regular trustee meeting held on Tuesday, December 3rd. The fire department budget meeting held on December 20th. These are all also, all 2019.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes that we're just writing.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes for those four dates that I mentioned. Do we have a vote, please Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay, so, now, all of these, there's a four right here. They're all the minutes and the paper. The paper's on top, that's what's on.
Okay, are we buying the Empire State Building here?
Those are, been transcribed, been transcribed today. And after this, there's three more for 2019. They're the longest meetings. So that's why the last ones, the, well, the last one I gotta do is four hours. It was a closeout.
Save the best for last?
No, she saved the last, to take it longer. And then I gotta go do the one, um, there's one, there's two, I'm not sure, almost four hours, and then there's one, I think it was an hour, almost two hours. So, hopefully I'll have those done by the next meeting. We'll be done with 2019. And then the next question is, what about 2020?
We stop doing it word for word.
I agree. So, I, I agreed to do, um, January's and, um, February's. I've started on those, but I haven't finished those yet. Because I'm still trying to get nineteen out of one. Not word for word, though.
You got more, or are there more coming at the next meeting?
There'll be three more coming to next meeting for nineteen. That'll be, um, November, I mean, December's 19th, December 30th, and December 5th. Because that's the last one.
I knew we were going to have a resolution out there and we stopped doing it word for word. There's too much work involved. We need your general idea out there. If you got any questions, pull the recording. I don't think anybody else, I mean, I've looked at other townships' minutes. I don't think anybody else out there does what we did. Thoughts? What do you think about it, Jim?
I'm a no on that.
You a no on that?
We're the whole reason that we need word for word. Number one, all the townships are not dealing with issues that we are, we are dealing with. Maybe certain meetings now, we could split the difference and have some of our department heads handle, uh, give written reports and not spend half an hour up there speaking and stuff like that. There's some things that we could probably do by appreciation, but when you get into sticky issues, we're gonna need word for word.
Also, I get the idea, if it was a sticky situation, you're recording it, I'm recording it, the township's recording it. I mean, full recording and listen to it.
Well, we need a resolution to address that.
That's how I started the conversation, with the thought process of doing that. Writing a resolution.
The last invoice I just got today, six cents a minute was one thousand and ninety-eight dollars.
So about two fifty a meeting?
Um, it depends on the page, they go by pages. How many pages she has.
We need to make this meeting shorter.
And those weren't even the long minutes. She hasn't even filled us for those last two, four hours maybe. These were just some of those ones you, you just signed.
Okay, well, it's something to think about, guys. I mean, save a few bucks. Okay, so, old business. First thing on the list is the Corona nineteen, COVID-19 updates. Mr. Lutz, you wanna talk about that since you do that every day?
Mr. Wolf, I don't know.
You go pass that buck on, okay? Mr. Wolf?
First of all, there's a resolution that you gentlemen passed last meeting on April 6th or April 7th. Tracy has it, we need your signature on it, where you allow the employees to go and work from home. And we closed the buildings, that kind of stuff. So we need the res, Tracy, did you just get it to them?
I looked at everybody, I looked at everybody, I work every day.
Well, they had their option to do that if they wanted to every day, but you passed the resolution that day to go ahead and do that, so.
Okay.
So, any signatures, could you pass it?
Those go for, no, the ones you already signed in your cabinet. Somebody hasn't signed them in the cabinet for the, I'm not sure who hasn't, but it's just sitting up there in the cabinet. Twenty-eight through thirty, that's twenty-eight through thirty-two. So twenty-nine through thirty-two are in the cabinet for signatures, so. If you don't remember signing it, they're sitting up there waiting for it.
Okay. I guess we'll talk about this now, then if it's okay once you sign one. Since we're on COVID, so we don't want to cover it later. Now that we've heard from the governor that they're opening up certain parts of the state to business, he has still not made a comment about government facilities. As of today, at least unless you heard something different, didn't you, Chief? The government facilities across the state do not have certification to open. Some are opening, some are on.
That's true.
But our county facilities are not. They haven't, they do not have a date yet.
Working.
Working inside, but the public isn't allowed to enter and open it.
Okay.
So I need an answer from you, at least for today, until the next time we meet or we get an emergency meeting or something. What do you guys want to do with our current buildings? Because Calumet's not able to be accessible as of today. And we had this building shut down as well, and any other township facilities shut down. What do you guys want to do with trustees?
We have no say, we don't know the Calumet. And the people that own it are saying it's closed.
Right.
This building here is run by the man over in the corner, Mr. Lutz. What do you wish to do with this?
You guys close it, that's what we're doing.
Okay, stay closed.
Okay, so until further notice, we'll put signs up in the building. So, in the process, I also sent out an email to all of you, you three trustees, asking for the permission for Chief and I to draw up a, what do you say, after policy? When we open, what do we do after we open? Do we want to go with a policy that includes requirement of masks of those that go behind the lobby? You know, if they stay in the lobby, they don't have to, that kind of thing. Do we do the temperatures, as Chief did today? Is it okay that we just start drafting a policy so we're prepared for the day that you open the buildings?
I think we'll probably get the direction for that from Mr. Governor when he says, open up, he's gonna give you the guidelines on which he wants you to live by.
Right, now, when I talked to Peterson, he said you have to have your own. Even if it mirrors, and you say, you mirror the, whatever the governor says, or the chief medical lady, you just, you've gotta write your policy. So we thought we would start drafting one and head in that direction so we're ready to go whenever you open up the gates. You guys okay with that? All right, so Chief and I.
When you do that, maintain your six feet when you do that.
Yeah, we'll put Texas on the floor.
Okay.
Outside of that, Chief, now I'd like you to expand on what you know is going on.
Well, you guys got my message today that state what they're doing. They have now opened up the hair salons and stuff like that. There are some, like Menards, they're requiring people to wear masks to come in the building. They're turning them away if they don't.
Yep.
There's some stores that are allowing people in. Whereas the government, we're still not allowing people in past the vestibule. Once they do come in, we take their temperature. We won't let them go beyond the doors in here. We're still at the ten people in an assembly at the moment because he hasn't opened up the churches yet or anything like that. On our Facebook for the fire department, if you check that, you get emailed. When I email you, it's the same thing I put on our Facebook as well. The updates on the numbers of people and where they're at. He's proposing to cut seven hundred and seventy-six point nine million dollars from the state budget. Some of that's gonna come from Medicaid, two hundred and ten million. K-12 Foundation, three hundred million. Other educational budget, fifty-five million. Higher education, a hundred and ten million. All of their agencies are supposed to cut a hundred million dollars out of their budget as well. He still has the freeze on the state, so they're not hiring anybody. There hasn't been any other changes, you know, allowing people into buildings and stuff like that right now. We have some people out there that are opening up on their own, and they shouldn't be doing that, so. Some places have been visited by the police departments to shut them down. So, till he says that we can go ahead and open up, we're gonna keep everything closed till then, at least. That's my recommendation for you guys, is to keep it closed for now.
Who enforces that? If somebody opened up a business, such you guys, or the Department of Health?
That's House, it's House to do that.
We can, but we've been going with public health, with cease and desist letters from public health because it's a public health order.
Okay.
So we've basically been accompanying them, and they've been filing the charges with the prosecutor's office. We've not had any indrafters with them.
It's not something to play around with.
We have one that went that route.
I just sent out an email to a couple of our nursing homes net. Most of them all been open, but I just sent out to make sure they run their water, check their filters and things like that, just in case you've kind of been dormant. I know that the new treatment center over here, there have been no visitors at all for family members, so I told them, you know, they wanna look at the filters, your water system, if you have water softener or anything like that, just to clean it out, be prepared, you know, as things go on. Would you guys get an email every day that I send you? I put it on our Facebook as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees.
Okay, uh, we talked about in the work session, we put out some RFPs, with some work to be done here at the township, and we'll discuss that at the present moment, so. You want to do that, Steve?
Sure, sure. Trustees, we had discussed in the work session about the RFPs for road repair and paving. Also, you had an RFP out there for tree removal services, and a third RFP out there for vacuum truck and stormwater cleanup. You received three bids for the asphalt, uh, paving program. You received one for the tree and one for the vacuum truck. We sent out twice to you all the results of those proposals. You have a third copy in your packet tonight. We discussed the streets that were going to be addressed. If you do all the RFP for the paving, and I'm gonna go through those streets to start with. Tucson Drive, Robb Court, Clovis Court, Alamo Co. Court, Burghland Drive, Big Ben Drive, Accent Park Drive, Township section only, Rosemont Drive, Creekside Drive, Township section only. Those roads are going to get crack sealed. You have an option under the bid either to provide crack seal just in the road itself, or a combination of road and the curbs. Because you've got a lot of complaints the last two years from different residents about the grass growing up through the cracks and the curbs, that's where your water runoff runs to. You really shouldn't have cracks there because if you do, it's gonna continue to fail. So you have an option to choose there. Second of all, location of mastic seal sign repair. You have a major breakdown of the seams on Weaver Road. Goes from Hempel to Manning. There's over two hundred joints to repair in that area if you do both sections. But that is part of the, was part of the RFP. The third part of the RFP was to do spot asphalt repair, deep patch asphalt overlay. It's gonna be one, two, or all three in each of these places. Starting in the Bricker Platte. And then there's gonna be, in the Bricker area, you're also gonna have Longcrest Avenue, Mater Avenue, Bricker Avenue, Knox Avenue. Different spots on, in the Bricker Platte, so it totals twenty-two thousand square feet of repair. Longcrest Avenue, Mater, or I said already. Holland Avenue subdivision, we're gonna mill and fill a couple areas there. Colgate, Fisk, Hanover, Holland subdivision. We're gonna paint the entire intersection there in that subdivision. Colgate, south of Fisk. Liskam Drive, that's a major problem, almost any one hundred square foot of area coming east, or I guess you'd say east and westbound, I guess, coming from Route Four, from the city of Dayton line to the next city of Dayton line. They're gonna be asphalting, paving, and overlaying in that area to include the intersections of Coulson, Tenshaw, Erickson, and Van Doren. Derby Road, the next two with Derby Road on your list. I will brief about those. We're gonna mill and fill those areas around Hackett, which we've got some major problems in that area. And also in Ferway to Kimmel, the various areas, including the bridge decking, and that would be the culvert decking on Derby. You applied in the past for issue two funds. We were talking to Choice One about applying again, but because of the COVID-19 and the cuts, the state of Ohio thinks that they're not gonna fund the issue two program through 2020. If that occurs, you will be putting an application in in 20, but hope to get awarded in 21. So you need to do some deep patch work there now because the road is falling apart. Burghland Avenue, mill and fill an area in front of 5289. That's the property there. Temple Road, east of Battle Lane, there's about two hundred square foot as you approach Weaver. It's on the right-hand side, to the south side. Calumet Lane, asphalt, about twenty-one hundred square foot of space up and down Calumet. Mile Road, the bridge decking is really bad, west of Snyder. They're gonna overlay about two thousand square feet there. So it's a comprehensive list of repairs that we need to make critical repairs in. None of it's complete repaving. An average repave of one mile road without curb and gutter and those things is about, costs you about two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You don't have that kind of money to do a complete repave, but you need to do spot repair to get rid of these major, what started out as small puddles, and now they're craters. And we can only puddle patch that stuff for a while before it becomes just an endless battle. So, yeah, there are proposals. And we discussed it, you know, went through it. My suggestion is, recommend is, is to pick one of the vendors and then go with all of the puddle, or the patchwork, deep patchwork that I just named on those streets. Number two, do the crack seal of all those streets and courts in the Tucson area. And number three, my recommendation is, because you haven't done this before, do half of the project on Weaver. Just, and that way, if you like what happened, you can come back and the contractor, they could pick, all three have said that they would guarantee the price for the other half, as long as you contractually say that, you know, still no binding, but they would honor the price next year. So I think, you know, you just need to choose one of those three to move forward.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero three five. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to enter into a contract with J&amp;A Construction out of Greenville, Ohio, to provide road repair and paving services for various roads and streets located in Jefferson Township in 2020 as identified by trustees in a list of those locations.
I second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two oh dash zero three five. Any questions? We have a vote, please Tracy.
Who's second it, please?
I did.
We're good.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries, passes. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. The other two RFPs, you got one worse than four, so.
We did that, basically.
Yeah, that's good.
I think you guys have the initial, uh, over in the name. Two places at the top.
Initial there.
And then at the bottom, where it was in the name. J&amp;A Construction. Then it's on the bottom.
Steve, can you get something going on the website announcing road repair?
Yes. I'll put a special section out there that you approve that this evening, trustees, and that these are the roads that are gonna be addressed.
Okay, so under new business, we have future meetings. Last month, we only had one meeting. We still have this coronavirus going on, and nothing's really changed. I believe we need to make a motion to do this be the only meeting in the month, and we'll have a meeting, I'll put a calendar out, we know the first scheduled date of the meeting is for next month. Mike, you want to second that?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to only have this meeting for this month, and not have the second meeting in the month, and then we'll have first meeting next month, and it will be a work session with our meeting as usual.
Do we want to wait until closer to the meeting date to cancel that? Just in case?
We'll pardon that, the second meeting this month, you not gonna do that?
By canceling it closer, let's make a decision to cancel it closer to that date.
I'm okay with that too, Professor York. If you think the governor's gonna change, if things gonna change for you now, then, I'm open for that, I mean, I would see it happen, it's not...
How are you gonna have this, you gonna call by phone? Or you gonna have to call a special meeting to do that?
Well, actually, new business, I was gonna bring up video conferencing, we're gonna talk about it just for a couple of minutes.
We're in the business. We are in the business, right?
We're in the business.
That's what we discussed, didn't we?
Yeah, the business. Well, we're in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, right. So, um, so we made a motion to go ahead and cancel the second meeting. You and I did, Rory. Jim wants us to kind of hold off on that, and that's the question, is how are we going to officially communicate that? How do you suggest we do that, Jim? Okay, so, say it comes that Friday before, on the day of the next meeting, and we decide that, no, we're not gonna have it, or yes, we are gonna have it. You just want to communicate that through, tell them, I look up an email?
Well, we're bound to advertise meetings we have, but to cancel the meeting, we just gotta, just a simple announcement on the door, make a little word about email.
I'll say with everything that's going on now, there's not gonna be any changes, things are gonna get...
Nah, it's clear. Okay, so let's just state what we have. We have a motion on the floor to not have a second meeting, and the next meeting will be the first meeting of next month, as scheduled. Jim made his statement, any other questions? You have a roll call, please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
No.
Okay. Any other new business?
What'd you say?
Yeah, we ran out of time in the work session. Our tech vendors, our website, Patrick Brooks, he has been working on solutions. There's a third, but it looks like he can get us into the video meeting business for roughly a thousand dollars based on a quote. His third quote might be a little cheaper. Buck Guy's got a proposal that ranges from cheapest route, five thirty-one, to advanced route, twenty-eight hundred, roughly. But that's all driven on the quality of cameras and the number of cameras you want to drive the meeting. So, uh, one of the, Mr. Brooks brought up, broadcast the meeting through Facebook. the meeting through Facebook streaming. We've got guidance from the OTA that we've got, whatever, if we do an electronic meeting, it has to be available to the public. So for some reason, we needed to get together and we needed to do an electronic meeting. There's the county, city, Dayton, Ronan, who's tonight talking about it. It's probably a time jump that we get ourselves. addition, Mr. Mann just said, we doubt how long this is gonna wrap up. So I think we need to have a discussion on whether or not to open a PO, to get some video conferencing set up for us. So if we need a meeting remote, we can. My recommendation would be let's open a PO not to exceed something like 2 grand, and let's get something going on these.
I need to think about it. Look at what you got, what you got, what information.
Should have copies of the emails. I just wanted to get it started, so.
Well, I haven't had a chance to look at it. I need time for it. I can't really look at it, because I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Either, I just have a suggestion. Make sure you look to see if you can compare an apple to apples, because sometimes, what, one company says they got it, and I compare it with the other company that does. So I don't have it, it's what's in there, so you might wanna look at it closely like that.
All these quotes, and this is something from what happened at our last meeting, and then from the announcement, I mean, this is preliminary. You've got copies of that in your email, so review it. And then, not a formal resolution tied to it, but I wanted to get the discussion started, because we may need to, we may need some electronic meetings to conduct things.
Any other new business? Physical officer report, please, Tracy.
I sent you guys, well, actually in your packet, and what I sent you guys, since it had to get out early, preliminary data about building lots of bills, as you know, you signed up, since you got this, sent the data in this packet. So I don't know any other way to do it. I'm still waiting on Buckeye to get that done. Of course, with everything going on, it's gonna be a while before we get you guys access to UAN reports, so you can get real time data. Other than that, I don't know any other way to, because I'm marking bills every day. You want me to put out a report every day? That takes up a lot of time, so to generate those reports. So the data, the data on the back of the table is as of Thursday or Wednesday, last week, whenever it was requested, I get it to Adrian to print out to get a report. Of course, I've done, like I said, I've done a lot of it in my works.